Yes, I can.
You do. Hooray. Good. I don't see Ed, I don't hear Ed, but Ed might just be listening, or Debbie. And we have Larry Stevens in the waiting room. I'll bring him in later.
And Mitch is extraterrestrial, I see.
I'm here.
Oh, hi, there you are. Good.
Yeah.
See you. You sound good.
Hi, David. I'm here. Anne Marie.
Hi, Anne Marie. How are you?
I'm doing great.
Good. Are you attending on phone? You can't see you.
It's because I have the video turned off.
Fair enough.
I'm cheating.
That is fair enough. Do you want to be on video or not? Because I can hide you from the screen if you're not going to attend.
Oh, really? Okay.
You want me to do that?
Sure.
Okay, I'll try that. Can you still hear us okay? Anne Marie?
I can hear you.
All right. So who are we waiting for? Let's see. Riley. Do we have everybody?
No. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Mitch disappeared.
Yeah.
Who? Oh, Mitch, yes.
Mitch, yeah. Oh, he's there, though.
He just disappeared.
Come on video for some reason. Let me just check and see. Hopefully he'll come back on in a minute. So we just wait for Mitch to, Mitch to show back up and then I think we're good.
There he is. All right.
CJ, you ready? Let me just check if CJ's ready. Just one second, you guys. I'm going to hide my video, by the way.
Okay.
But I'm still here. I don't need my audio to, but I'm here.
Hey, I, wait, David, I don't see Kathy.
She's right.
Kathy's here.
She's there.
She's got a statue back of her.
Well, yeah, she, you can't see her right now, but there are two metal oars. There she is. Oh, I see. I see the top of her head.
Okay, we're ready to go. You guys are ready. We are ready.
On record?
All right, let's call to order the City of Lincoln City City Council meeting of Monday, April 13th, 2020, 6:00 PM. Rope call, Kathy.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Judy Casper?
Here.
Deanna Hinton?
Here.
Riley Hogland?
Here.
Diane Kuz?
Here.
Rick Mark?
Here.
And Mitch Parsons?
Here.
Great. If it's all right with the council, I'm going to suspend the pledge of allegiance. We'll pick it up next meeting. I also need to make a change to the agenda, if you will. Under Special Order of Business, K, item, section K, 14 and 15 ought to come up to H. Since they're public meetings, public hearings. So I'll just deal with them up at the public hearings area. That, all right?
Sure.
Okay. If we could, then, we've got the, first order of business is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have minutes of work session of December 2nd, 2019. And number two, we have the minutes of work session, December 10th, 2019. Number three was the minutes of the regular meeting, February 10th, 2020. And number four was minutes of regular meeting, February 24th, 2020. And number five was minutes of regular meeting, March 9th, 2020. Any comments for minutes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Deanna, and I, just before I make my comment, are we going to use a participant function on here so we can see when hands are raised and that kind of thing?
It should be by your, oh. When you do your participants, you can see your hands up?
Yeah, I have it up, but it's covering up people's faces. I just wanted to
Oh.
make sure we're using it.
Okay.
Okay, my comment is that I would just like to move to approve the minutes of work sessions, December 2nd, December 10th, and the regular meeting minutes of February 10th, February 24th, and March 9th. There were just a couple few typos, and I've already sent what I found to Kathy's.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Rick. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor with an eye?
Aye.
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 Any, any nays? Here, none? All right. Public comments. Did anybody send any public comments in, or is that why Larry is here? David, do you?
Mayor. Mayor, I've received one public comment, but it's for the public comment period on resolution 2020-07.
All right, any, any from just general, general comments? Nothing? All right. Then let's move on to, you know, public hearings, public comments. And we have, the first one is a public comment on resolution 2020-05. This is the mobile food unit fee. And the resolution accompanying it would be 2020-05. Is there any comments on that resolution? And none came in. And this, I might remind council that we had these last council meeting as well, and decided to move them forward to give the public more time to enter in any kind of comments, so.
Your Honor, also, I didn't receive any comments on these. Just pretty straightforward, application fee for planning, license fee for finance, and the concession flat rate, the same as street vendors.
And then again, these would be added to the long list of fees that we'd handle that way in the future?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that's that one.
Okay.
All right. We had Larry on for a second. I'm not sure what he's here to talk about.
Larry's here for the public arts presentation.
Oh, okay. Then let's, hearing no comments, then on other than that, let's move then to the public comments for resolution 2020-07. This is on the composting with the company resolution down below. Mr. Chandler, you had, you said one?
I did. I received one from Scott Morgan, and he states, "I am opposed to this 33.3% increase to my monthly NLSS bill." That's it.
That's it, okay. And Scott Morgan, okay?
And, Your Honor, in the packet, there is an email from North Lincoln where they propose a different rate structure. I wasn't recommending it.
And, yes, this came up as well at last meeting, and not all of us had seen that third kind of funding proposal or fee proposal, so I appreciated that coming out. Did everybody get that and see that third option? Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I did see the third option. Why are we not considering that?
Well, we will when we get to the resolution. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you'd all gotten it, and then we can bring it up during discussion. Okay? All right. Well, hearing none, and let's move on then to ordinances. We have ordinance number 2020-09. And this was, we had first reading last council meeting, so this would be for the second reading. Mr. Attorney?
Yes. Rolling to it now.
Okay.
Your Honor, counsel, this is second reading of ordinance 2020-09, and ordinance of the City of Lincoln City amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code, Title VIII, Health and Safety, adding Chapter 811, Nuisance Polystyrene Foam. There was one change in the ordinance which I have to read, and that's on the last page of the ordinance under the effective date. Not getting to it fast enough. It says, "Section 4 pursuant to Chapter 9, Section 9.3, this ordinance takes effect on April 13th, 2021." With that change, it obviously allows time for the pandemic situation to pass and time for people to utilize the supplies they may have ordered and have available that would violate this ordinance. So with that, I'm asking for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm going to move that we not proceed with this proposed ordinance. I still have concerns about our, the open-ended nature of this. We're putting a year, a date a year out without really exploring the impact or what's this, what the effect is on local businesses, and we're also disregarding the recommendations of the Sustainability Committee, which I think is, is not a very good way to proceed.
So is there a motion in there? Your motion is to?
I move that we not proceed with this ordinance.
To decline, to decline this resolution?
Yes.
It's actually to decline the second reading, correct?
Yes.
Is there a second? Okay. Nobody, I don't see any hands. Riley?
I'd like to make a motion to approve second reading of the ordinance 2020-09. And with, right, with the revisions of it starting 2021.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to proceed with second reading and with the correction or addition of a year out with the starting date, right?
Approve second reading and adopt the ordinance.
Approve second reading and adopt the ordinance, okay. Discussion. You, Rick, this would be, you know, again, where you'd, you know, your same arguments?
Well, yeah, I don't want to just keep repeating myself. I, I am wondering if it's possible we have a year to have, go ahead and do the work session that we had talked about so that we could bring business into the discussion? I don't know if that's, it feels like we're putting the cart before the horse kind of thing.
I had a question, and just as I was reading the ordinance, and Richard, perhaps you could, and I didn't mark down where it was, but it talked about not applying to raw foods. And in the wording, it said, "prepared foods," in parentheses, it had "cooked." And I wonder if somehow sushi, takeout sushi then is exempt, or? Because I would have considered that prepared food, but when "cooked" was in parentheses, I got a little nervous.
Yeah, I, I didn't consider sushi. If you want to delay this, I could try to write a definition for "prepared" that doesn't just include "cooked." But what we were trying to make sure didn't get in there was the raw meat and things like that. I, I could just take out the word "cooked." We could make that change. And then "prepared" would have the common, ordinary meaning that means not just cooked, but could mean other preparations.
Yeah. I, I would, because I was fine with "prepared," because I think that can be an argued point. So I'd recommend taking out "cooked." I guess furthering that, though, I've got to align myself with Rick's comments. I'm a little gun-shy, quite frankly. I'm all for this and would vogue on it in a positive if we weren't in the middle of this pandemic. I hear businesspeople all the time, the small business, and it's just one more thing that they have to think about. I'm not sure how many people are out there really using styrofoam or this would affect, and it's probably a very few number, hopefully. But I, I just hate the perception that in the middle of all this trauma, that, you know, we, local government, you know, lay this on, even though it is a year out. Because we, we all know this isn't going to happen. Crisis isn't going to be over in a few short months. We've got a long recovery, and businesses are going to be struggling, so I'm not, not in favor of instituting it, even with a year kick in, frankly. Riley?
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, and, but this is not, we're not doing it just now. You know, we've been working at this for a while, and with the year out, I feel like it's more than enough time, essentially, to have life come back and, and, and it's, they'll know what's coming, you know, frankly, so I feel like it's, I think I would have suggested having it be a year out anyway, regardless of whenever we, you know, put it into effect. So for me, it doesn't change my timeline as far as, you know, hey, we've written the ordinance and here's the time forward. And then that way, we have the time to explore bags with Explore Lincoln City and giving businesses credits for jumping on this kind of program of whatever, whatever we end up doing, you know, I feel like there's, there's plenty of time there to, to make it, you know, healing, if you will.
Counselor Casper?
If we did approve this and it wasn't enough time, could we extend it? We could extend it another six months or a year if we needed to, right?
We would have to do an amendment to the ordinance, but as long as we did that before the effective date, it can be done.
Okay.
And if you do want to clarify, where the word "cooked" appears is in Section 811-050 under exemptions. It says, "The prohibitions of this ordinance do not apply to raw food products, including packaged raw meat, beef, poultry, seafood, and pork, and other raw food products that have not been prepared, parentheses, cooked by a food vendor." If, if you all agree, we can strike the word "cooked," and then sushi would be back in.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to say that as far as I know, we haven't received any comments about this good or bad, favor or opposed. And I would like to support Riley in that we've been talking about this for, oh geez, over a year. Easy. And so I support moving forward.
Sounds good. Any other comments, deliberation?
Just to be clear, I am all in favor of banning styrofoam and getting it off the beaches. And I had a wonderful takeout Mexican meal in the past week, and they put it on a paper plate, wrapped in aluminum foil, and that worked just great.
I'm with you, Rick. All right, how about a roll call, please? Again, the motion was to approve.
That's what the changes as read?
Yes, and with the, yes, and the "cooked," stroke, strike, "dricken."
Strike the word "cooked"?
Cooked.
Okay. So Dick, Dick Anderson?
No.
Judy Casper?
Yes.
Deanna Hinton?
Yes.
Riley Hogland?
Yes.
Diane Kuz?
Yes.
Rick Mark?
No.
And Mitch Parsons?
No.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll go to ordinance number 2020-911. Sticking the transfer of Logan Road.
Yahoo!
Your Honor, counsel, this is first reading of ordinance 2020-11, and ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, accepting the transfer of a portion of Logan Road, Lincoln County Road number 100, from Lincoln County, Oregon pursuant, yeah, Lincoln County, Oregon, pursuant to ORS 373-275B and Lincoln County Order 22055. Ask for approval of first reading.
Your Honor. I would, I'd like to move that we approve the first reading of accepting Logan Road into the city from the county.
Second.
We have a, a motion to approve with a second on ordinance 2020-11.
Judy seconded?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion.
Can I say yahoo?
Was it, was a check attached, Mr. Chandler?
No, yeah, it will be sent as soon as we approve it.
Oh. Okay. All right. Pretty cut and dry what we've been waiting for, so any other comments? Don't see anything. Roll call, please.
Casper?
Yes.
Deanna Hinton?
Yes.
Riley Hogland?
Yes.
Diane Kuz?
Yes.
Rick Mark?
Yes.
And Mitch Parsons?
Yes.
And Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, counsel, this is second reading of ordinance number 2020-11, and ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, accepting the transfer of a portion of Logan Road, Lincoln County Road number 100, from Lincoln County, Oregon, pursuant to ORS 373-275B and Lincoln County Order 22055. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve the second reading of the transfer of Logan Road from the county to the city.
And adopt. And adopt the ordinance?
And adopt the ordinance, thank you.
All right. And who was that? Mitch?
It's me.
Oh. All right. So we have a motion to approve with a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Deanna Hinton?
Yes.
Riley Hogland?
Yes.
Diane Kuz?
Yes.
Rick Mark?
Yes.
Mitch Parsons?
Yes.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
And Judy Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. All right. Let's go to resolutions, resolution 2020-05. And this was on the fees of the food carts, food trucks.
Did we skip over the 2K items you wanted?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Yeah, I didn't write them up there. Let's go, before we do that, we've got under K14 that got moved up to H. This is a annexation proposal, and it was recommended, because of timing and process, to continue this public hearing to June 8th, 2020. And this is on the Woods Annexation. Is anything? Richard or Anne Marie, did anybody want to say anything more than that, or is?
No, I think that suffices, Mayor. Just add that it had been scheduled for Planning Commission to deliberate. The public hearing has been held. Planning Commission just has not had a chance to deliberate and make the recommendation. Right now, that's tentatively scheduled for Planning Commission, May 5th, pending, pending what happens over the next month.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. Can somebody give me a summary of what is this, Woods Annexation?
It's annexing approximately 11.15 acres into the city with a zone request of R1.5. It's on Logan Road. It is the same property that had an annexation attempt in 2014, and then there was one in 2014 and one prior to that.
It's the Logan Park property, formerly known as Logan Park.
The Gully. The Clearcut.
The Clearcut, yes.
All right, so the recommendation is to continue, just on timing, is there? All those in, any disagreement with that? 100% consensus? Okay, nobody disagrees? Nope? All right. Are you all right, Mr. Appicello?
Yeah, continued by unanimous consent.
Yep. All right, let's go then to the other public hearing, and that's a threatened, called threatened zone change. It too is in that same situation, and the recommendation is to move it, continue it to the June 8th, 2020 council meeting.
Yes, and, Mr. Mayor, I would just add that while this property is already in the city, this is a zone change request from multiple family residential to recreation commercial. It involves eight parcels. Again, the public hearing has been held with Planning Commission. They just have not been able to deliberate and make the recommendation to City Council, and that is tentatively scheduled for May 5th.
All right. So do we have unanimous consent to continue this on? Any disagreement?
I have a question.
Oh, Mr. Riley?
Why aren't they having Zoom meetings, the Planning Commission?
When, this is Ron, when we started these, when we started these meetings with the declaration of the emergency, the only meetings that we had designated as essential were your meetings and the Budget Committee meetings. As we're looking at this as progressing, we've now added the Planning Commission meeting in that, so that they will be having a Zoom meeting in May.
All right, so everybody's all right on the consent to move this forward for June?
Sure.
Hearing no alternative, aye? Unanimous consent, Mr. Attorney? All right, now let's go back up to the resolution. So 2020-05.
Just looking for a motion to approve the resolu-
Do anybody want to make a motion?
Which one is it? Where we at?
This is 2020, this is the food, mobile food units, on the fees.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fees.
It's resolution 2020-05.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 2020-05.
I'll second.
Counselor Hinton seconded it. Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Riley Hogland?
Yes.
Diane Kuz?
Yes.
Rick Mark?
Yes.
Mitch Parsons?
Yes.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Judy Casper?
Yes.
And Diana, Deanna Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, now we have a resolution number twenty twenty dash oh seven. This is on the, uh, com, uh, residential compostables. And, what, you got company in there, uh, Counselor Mark? Your mask?
Just in case.
Okay.
I don't want anybody to get my sickness.
Okay. Um, there were three options, uh, one, a flat rate for residential, and that was, what, six eighty-five? Then a, uh, ten percent across the board, which included residential and, uh, commercial. Uh, and that, with that one, commercial wasn't getting any, um, benefits. And the third option was still a ten percent, but the commercial got a, uh, use of, um, the compostable all, but for landscaping materials only, not for food. So it was a way for the, uh, Senator District to, uh, in essence, provide some kind of services for a fee. I think, uh, Mr. Hogland, um, grilled, uh, and, and in a good way, uh, got the residential, um, fee down, you know, by adding a compostable, uh, service, you went through the steps of how you could overall reduce your, uh, overall garbage, um, expense, if I recall. To Counselor, uh, Mark?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I wanted to make that point, and, you know, thanks, Riley, and I, I wonder if in, uh, we can make a point of, um, educating the public on, uh, some of the options they have to mitigate the impact of this, such as, you know, if, if you're compost, then you're reducing your regular garbage, which means you could maybe cut that to every other week, or you don't have to have the biggest bin, you can have a smaller bin, and there are things you can do to, to make it less painful. And, and maybe we could also say why we're doing this, and what are the benefits to the environment and all that sort of stuff.
Hey, uh, let me remind us, the reason we need to do this, um, because it doesn't go into effect for a year, is to allow, uh, North Sanitary to purchase there and get a delivery of a needed truck to do this. So I, I would hope, and we could certainly request and mandate education, you know, during the year, as we ramp up for the delivery of the ground top roller bins, as they, they call. And I think, uh, if I saw it right, Mr. Hogland has gotten his down to a wastepaper basket once a month, uh, trash, you know.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I hate to take your line, Mr. Hogland, go ahead, and what do you got?
I just want to make a motion to approve twenty twenty dash oh seven.
Okay. Uh, and, and in the resolution is a flat rate- No, well, in the resolution, uh, is a flat rate of the residential, uh, the six eighty-five.
I, I like the third one, with, I like the third one with offering landscaping for commercial businesses.
I hear that one dying for no second.
Oh, second, sorry.
I was gonna say.
Second, Dad, I like that, I like the third motion, I'm shaking my head, but I'm not speaking, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yes, please, second.
Okay, we have a, uh, motion and a second to approve the resolution, and the fee would be the ten percent fee across the board, allowing commercial to access for land yard debris only, I think is the wording.
I, I guess I would recommend that, uh, if that's the option you want to pursue, I think we need to ask North Lincoln for some backup of how those numbers work, because it seems to me to be questionable to have a lesser service provided to commercial and, but charge them the same. So I, I, and I don't know how, maybe given it to Debbie, and I haven't seen it, but, um, you said ten percent, I don't know, um, how that works out, maybe it's all show, the work is all shown and it's defensible, but I certainly haven't seen it. I did, uh, ten percent across the board. So, um, maybe you want to continue this and we'll redo it? Uh, if you do pass it, then you need to at least give direction that, that there be a change.
I, I agree with the city attorney, um, I, I, I don't know that there's justification for increasing the rate on a commercial the same as residential.
And actually, um, I, I'm not in favor of that, but, um, I'd had discussions with North Sanitary and was pursuing that line when Tina, uh, showed me that third, um, option. I asked her how many commercial, um, you, units now, uh, do any kind of, uh, landscaping, um, and she didn't know, um, obviously. And my belief is that the commercial properties probably pay for it to be done now, um, and their landscapers, you'll take that off as part of their fee. So again, I would be a little hesitant that they would be recognizing they were gaining anything at all, uh, being able to put landscaping scraps in the, um, brown container. Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, could, I'm just, I'm thinking about, Tina said she needed to order her truck a year ahead, and so if we're just, if we all are in agreement with her ordering the truck and moving forward with this concept, but we're only stuck on that one issue, can we split the motion and just move forward with, with, um, beginning this program? And maybe at our next meeting, we'd have the opportunity of having more information from, um, Tina about, about the landscaping for businesses part? Because she wanted to roll this out in the spring, so when people are doing all their trimming, that they can actually utilize this program the best.
Yeah, and, and that was meant to be, you know, I think the residential, um, you know, she was pushing the middle one, which was no service to the commercial, but yet they were paying. And this third option, you know, gives them, the commercial, something for a fee. I just question, you know, whether it's really something at all, and, and as you've got the city attorney and the finance kind of questioning, you know, the justification of it all. Ms. Casper?
Am I, yes. Is it possible to, um, discuss the potential of the second one with the residential? And then in a year, could we look at it later and add the commercial, or is it all or nothing? Or don't we know?
I don't know what the, what, what the question again?
Well, we accept ten percent with residential now, and then is it possible to add the commercial if it's desirable in the year, or as a pilot program in the future?
I, I think that the reservation, at least on my part, and I believe the finance, uh, director, is that I think there's really only one option, and that's the six dollars or whatever on the residential users. And I think trying to justify having the commercial pay for it is just going to be real difficult. And I think if you want to do this program, you should just move forward with the resolution as it's drafted. If, um, North Lincoln can come up with in the next year, a rate study or some justification where we could, uh, provide a service to commercial customers and support that with an appropriate rate, and thereby lessen the cost to residential, that would be great. But right now, I don't have anything that I can recommend to you other than the residential.
But if I might, this is Debbie, so governments are constrained on their fees by something that private industries are not, and that is that our fees have to be reasonably, reasonably related to the cost of services provided. And, um, so, yeah, if they can do a study and show that changing the fees, you know, i- is reasonably related to the cost provided, then that would be acceptable, but without that, I don't, I just don't think you can charge commercial for something they're not getting.
That's our value. Mr. Hogland, you have your hand up, are you still?
Yeah, I just, you know, they, businesses haven't said one way or the other, we haven't had bus- just to say no, we don't want to participate in a ten percent increase to have the whole city be composted, and they haven't disagreed with, um, the yard debris either. I'm sure that whatever the price is, if they're having yard, if they're having landscape services, there's probably a cost associated with removing the prop, the, the things that they've taken and without that. So they would be reducing a cost, uh, at the business level, um, with the landscapers, and then that way, they're also participating in something that is more than, you know, that they're using, yeah. But I, I understand the difficulty in, um, what Mr. Appicello has said about defending it and the services, and, you know, how Ms. French was trying to advocate for a ten percent across the board without hmm, the businesses being participatory, but, you know, I think, you know, that's one way that, you know, in the long run, businesses can be participa- participating in this program, you know, you start with the yard debris, and then as it, it rolls forward, and this is something that people really want to do and enjoy, and significantly different prices between, you know, the dumpster and, um, a composting thing, and how wonderful it'd be to know that the food industry, it's a lot of food industry here, and that they are also able to do that at that capacity as far as participate in the composting program.
Have I remembered the comp, they're not going to be able to play in the food disposal.
I thought Tina, I thought Ms. French said that there are some that she could do.
A, a small, a small handful, handpicked and monitored by her, otherwise the end source, you know, charges us even more to take this product because of the, uh, contamination.
But we didn't, did we get a price difference on that from Ms. French? I don't know what, I don't know what even more is, you know, you know what I mean? I, that's not a number for me. So, you know, here we are, able to incorporate businesses into this, thereby reducing the overall cost for everybody. And, you know, it's, it's a significant change, I understand that, and, you know, and, and I hope that there are handpicked businesses that participate in it, but, you know.
Counselor Mark?
Uh, yeah, I, I think we need to follow the, uh, advice from the city attorney and the finance director here, that North Lincoln made it clear that the commercial businesses would not be participating in the composting because of their history of, of not doing it correctly, and, uh, that the, the, you know, I don't know what the number, dollar number is, Riley, but, uh, Tina made it pretty clear that it was, uh, prohibitive to get them involved. So, I think we need to be, obviously, we need to be realistic, and we don't want to open the door to, um, lawsuits or whatever it is that the businesses would do, I mean, how many businesses in town have no landscaping at all? I would, I'm going to guess that most of them by far don't have any landscaping. Uh, so, um, yeah, I think we got to kind of swallow this one.
Counselor Casper, you have your hand up?
Um, yeah. So the second option is ten percent for residential only, right?
No.
No.
Residential and commercial.
But they don't get to participate?
And they don't get to participate.
Okay. All right, just clarifying.
Mr. Chandler?
I just wanted to point out that we do review their rates annually, and, uh, so there will be opportunities in the future. If, uh, if, um, the concerns that were expressed by Richard and Debbie are able to be met, uh, there will be opportunities, uh, to review their rates, like I said, which we do annually.
All right, well, there's a motion on the table to approve the resolution, but with the third option, which is a ten percent, um, increase for all users and commercial getting to use the, uh, landscaping, uh, disposal part. Uh, roll call, please.
Or could I remove my second?
What?
Roll call.
What? Didn't, are you, were you serious, Hannah?
Yes.
Vote no.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can we have the motion again?
The, the motion is to approve the resolution and the, uh, rather than the residential fee only, which is suited with a ten percent across the board rate hike on all users, and the commercial users only getting to use the landscaping disposal portion of the, um, composting component.
Can I just, it's eight dollars, eight dollar minimum to dump at the thing, I think, at the recycling service center, but I don't know about the wood part of it, the wood debris, so I'm not sure of that, I think they have a chipper there or something.
So any, so that's the, the motion. So, any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Diane Kuz?
No.
Rick Mark?
No.
Mitch Parsons?
No.
Dick Anderson?
No.
Judy Casper?
No.
Deanna Hinton?
No.
And Riley Hogland?
I'll be the only yes, that's fine. May I make another motion?
Again.
May I make a motion to accept the first offer of the six dollar and eighty-five cent charge?
I'll second that.
Per residential customer.
As stated in the resolution?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, and we have a second from Counselor Mark? Discussion? Roll call?
Rick Mark?
Yes.
Mitch Parsons?
No.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Judy Casper?
Yes.
Deanna Hinton?
Yes.
Riley Hogland?
Yes.
Diane Kuz?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, we have, uh, special order of business, Arts Committee Artist Finalist Recommendation. Is this? Just Ed?
We, we have a representative of the, uh, Public Arts Committee here to, uh, deliver the recommendation, uh, for an artist selection for the major pieces of, uh, public art to be placed at the cultural center.
Great. And Larry, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, sure, I'm Larry Stevens, I'm one of the members of the committee. Uh, as you probably know, I, I, uh, we're an advisory committee, and, and everything has to run through you to, to be sure that it's legal, uh, and we have, uh, we have quite a bit of work that we've been doing to try and, uh, come up with some more art major pieces, but mostly this one, so, um, I've got a, uh, a slide thing to show you, is that if that's okay, uh, I can bring that up on my screen here and, and make it full screen. Come on, view. There we go. Yeah, uh, this is the, uh, artist request for qualifications, uh, the results and the recommendations from the Public Arts Committee, and, um, uh, we, they made this slide present- And, um, uh, we, they made this slide presentation for us to try, keep me on track and make sure that we stay, you know. Uh, actually, if you remember, uh, about two years ago, we, we, uh, did a, uh, a Lincoln City Public Arts Master Plan. And this is part of that master plan that you, you as a, uh, city council did approve. Uh, uh, we, uh, we, we were looking towards having a major public art installation in the Lincoln City Cultural Center. And there were four steps to, to try and do this, uh, and we wanted to bring you up to date on it. The city issued an RFQ, uh, and, uh, there were a huge selection of, of people come in. And I, I thought it was amazing. I didn't expect this many. We had 18, uh, people, very good, even some from around the world, some from Spain and some from Japan. And, uh, we narrowed it down to five finalists by looking at the work of the people that we'd seen so far. And, uh, it was really interesting and, and a great deal of fun. Um, once, uh, once we had it down to five, uh, we wanted to get as many people's input into this as possible, both because it's good to have good input, but also because we, we wanted to have everybody kind of take a, a ownership in this piece of art. And, uh, so we invited the five finalists that we had narrowed it down to, to come to Lincoln City and to meet with the Public Arts Committee. The, the, we came up with a whole bunch of questions to, based on things that were in our, uh, uh, Public Arts, uh, Master Plan, uh, so that we would have input and see how each of the, each of the artists would fit into the group, fit into the needs. We interviewed each of them as a committee, uh, asking questions and that for a little over an hour for each person. Uh, and then after that, that evening, we got together, uh, uh, at the city council thing and had a huge turnout of people standing room only. Uh, and they each gave a five-minute presentation there. And, uh, we had scorecards available and people filled out those. And, you know, so there was a second input. And then we went online with the survey, uh, put up by the, uh, LCCC, uh, website. And, uh, people looked at that and then filled out the same kind of thing. Uh, there were videos on there of the public forum. And, uh, each of them really helped us to, to narrow down, uh, and to, and to decide. Each of the five, uh, were, were really, uh, excellent. Uh, I was impressed with the quality of the, the, of the, uh, things. And, uh, this is the average scores from the Public Arts Committee, the first of the three groups that I did. And, uh, you can see, uh, that they all did extremely well. It's because each of them-
Excuse me, I'm, as somebody sharing more information, I'm not seeing any other-
You're not? Then I'm doing it wrong. How do I share this screen with, uh?
Was it, uh, David, you want to help in there?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for attending the IT. Larry, there should be a screen at the bottom that says, Share Screen. If you click, if you kind of move your mouse underneath and you click that, it's a green arrow.
Okay, well, let me get this back down so that I can get under that. I'm sorry, I apologize.
All those plus S will do it as well.
Okay, here we go.
It, it might work better if you go to, I'm going to full screen view.
Okay, I will. I had to do this to get to the, uh-
Okay, Larry, we can see your, we can see your screen now, which is great.
Yeah?
Okay, so let me get this, uh, publication up and get it full screen.
It's put on, on this screen, thank you. I'm going to mute this audio now from, from the IT support.
Okay, can everybody see?
Yep.
Okay, um, let me go back just so you see the other, uh, you know, these were the, the steps that we had done. Uh, now, on my screen, the pictures are covering, uh, some of the information, but it's basically the four steps that we went through. The issuing of the RFQ and then the, uh, the committee and then the public forum and then the online. So, the results that we got from that, uh, uh, were, were pretty good. Uh, again, the pictures, is there a way to move those pictures to like, to the top or something instead of to the right? Or is that, is that covering for everybody else?
We individually can, I can slide that around so I can see more of what you're trying to show us.
I see, okay.
I can slide the faces around.
Oh, okay. Well, here, I can, we mind too that. Okay, great. As a matter of fact, they popped down to the bottom, which is good. So, uh, these are the five members of the committee and, and what they came up. As you can see, each of the, uh, artists got very good scores. Uh, it was way up there and, and it's because these were the best of the, of the ones that were submitted. And each member graded each one, uh, with points based on the questions that, that we had asked. And each of the questions were not only, uh, there, but, but weighted based on how important we thought each of the questions had to be with, uh, what, what they were presenting. The average scores, uh, uh, of the public comment were, had similar results. Uh, Pete did quite well there, Pete Beeman. The, uh, based on, um, on, on the information that they had, uh, given us and, and looking at the previous pieces, people, this, this is from the evening thing we did at the city hall, uh, there in the council chamber. And, uh, then this next one starts into the ones that came online because we had it posted online and, and these, uh, the, the staff has graphed, which makes it kind of interesting. This is, uh, having to do with the question of iconic attraction, uh, for their works in the past and, and that. And, uh, Pete came out quite well there. Are there any questions about what that graph represents or does everybody grasp that pretty fast?
That's good.
Yeah, it really is. And, and, and it, it, it's a great numeric way of trying to make the decision based on a lot of people's input. Uh, the, the next question had to do with interactive and, and Pete did extremely well there because that's probably his strength. If you looked at his pieces in Portland and, and the major cities, Seattle and, and that, you'll, you'll find that his pieces are all very interactive and, and, uh, great fun. And, uh, and should be a, a, a great attribute to it. Again, we had approximately the same answer. Pete came out ahead of everyone, even though they were all very good. Durability was another question. And, um, uh, Pete did extremely well there too. We, I was very impressed with the durability questions as we asked people who had bought other artworks in Portland and other places, uh, how the stuff, how it stood up and also how he stood behind the sculpture. Because being that they are motion, uh, almost all based on motion, uh, you worry about durability somewhat. But everyone that we talked to, uh, came back and, and said that he had stood behind it and taken care of it and done maintenance and, and that sort of thing. The other thing that impressed me about Pete was the fact that he said he had never come in over budget, which, uh, uh, shows a great deal of commitment on his part to, to try and be fair with us too in, in making the present, making the piece. Safety was another question that came up. And on the safety, uh, thing, there was one person get a higher rating, but I'm not quite sure why, except that when you do have movable, uh, things, maybe, uh, people were worried that, that maybe, uh, being movable, that they might not be as safe. But that didn't seem to be the case when we called around and talked to, to other people, uh, on his existing pieces. He, he, they two were very close anyway, even, even at that point. So, here's kind of the, the nuts and bolts of the recommendation. The Public Art Committee recommends that Pete Beeman be selected as the artist of record for the public art installation at the Lincoln City Cultural Center. And it's, it's based on the four-step vetting process that we previously described. And we also think not only was it good having all that, those, um, people involved, but, but also the, the fact that, that all of those people that took, uh, part are still going to feel that this is part of their own, uh, and, and that they're committed to the process. The next steps, uh, requesting Pete Beeman to develop and present concepts and estimates for the proposed installation, to be incorporated into the, uh, a personal services agreement. And I'm going to have to move my pictures off the bottom in order to get to the, to the rest of that. Negotiate a personal service agreement in which the scope of work and budget proposal is clearly defined. And of course, we will present that to city council as needed as we're moving forward. But that, that's the, our first step, we think, is picking, uh, who we think is going to be the best artist to come up with. And, and then we'll be back to you with the, with the next steps as we go on. Anybody have any, uh, of their own input or, or questions or, uh?
So, uh, Larry, if, if I can, the, um, question really here is, the next step for the city council is just to approve the next step, which would be for negotiating with Pete, uh, Beeman?
Yes, correct.
The actual, um, funding approval would come at another step?
That's correct, that's correct. Yes. We're, we're going to take it slow and, and make sure it's what, what everybody wants because we will be showing things as much as possible, again, to keep everybody in the loop and feeling like part of the, the process.
Okay.
As we move along.
The, and I, I can't see me now, or here, let me go back to these, uh, people who have their hands up. Uh, Counselor Mark?
Uh, yeah, thanks. I, I guess I'm, so, this, this is going to be paid for out of the city council budget? Or is there a cultural center?
No, there is a cultural center. Remember that we have a half of percent, uh, of all public works. Uh, and, and then the city council also has, uh, put money into this fund on it because we've been planning it for quite a while. And the money is set aside already. Uh, we're going to try and stay within that, uh, range. Matter of fact, we're fairly comfortable with Pete that, that he will stay within the range that we've been hoping for. But we do have the money set aside already.
So, um, Rick, do you, do you have more follow-up question?
Well, I, is that a number that we can share or is that something that we're not?
It's not a, it's not a, a, a chiseled in stone thing, but there is, uh, I believe, uh, in the neighborhood of 120, 30,000 in that fund at the moment.
So, I, I guess following that line, um, Debbie or Mr. Chandler, um, I'm assuming all that money, uh, in that budget item didn't come from the percent for art? Did some of it, uh, came in from the general fund?
Yes, it did. Yes, it, that's my understanding that it did. Uh, over the years, it's been piling up.
Uh, Debbie or?
That has been a collection that has come in over the years, but it, it, but the, um, the, the artwork will be paid entirely from the percentage of the art fund.
Well, I, I guess $120,000, um, isn't just from the art, percent of art. So, my, my real question is, you know, I'm struggling, quite frankly, um, the timing of this. And, um, the, as much as I enjoy the art and want, want us to advance, but, uh, say if 50% of this, uh, or more has come from the general fund, you know, is, it's quote, uh, it's only restricted, that portion is only restricted because we put it in there. Um, and we could just as soon take it out as well and wait for another time, i- if so needed. And, and so that's kind of my question, um, because I'm, I'm sensing, you know, if, if and when we approve for the actual expense, depending on timing, uh, people don't understand the restricted funds concept. And so in the middle of a crisis, you know, you're spending hypothetically $100,000 on art fees when businesses are going out of business, is what I'm, Chris, the timing, the perception of it.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I think what I would need to do on that is that, uh, go back and trace it back to make sure that it all came from the, uh, from the construction contributions rather than the general fund. And, and I can send that information to you.
Well, and, and that doesn't, you know, we could move ahead to this next step anyway.
Yes.
And without that, but that, I think that would be some information that we would want to have as we progress. Any other, uh, questions? All right, I don't see any on my hand up board, so.
I can look up the, sorry, this is Debbie. I can look up the, um, amount of general fund, uh, revenue that's in the percent for art fund here. Unless you just want to wait and get that information li- later.
Well, I, I, we could wait, uh-
Okay.
I guess, Larry, I, I would want to make sure that, um, you understand and that Pete Beeman understands too, um, as you negotiate, that it would, uh, the next step or the funding step would be contingent upon, um, budgeting and, obviously, the willingness then.
Right.
Okay.
Right, and, and I can understand that. I was a businessman my whole life. Uh, I've also served on art, uh, selection committees in Salem and, and also one in Albany when, when I lived in each of those towns. Uh, I've never seen before, uh, any town that worked so hard to try and get as much input uh, from the, the public so that they would think of it as a, as, as part of their project. And so, uh, we've tried really hard. So far, all we're asking is that, that of the people who are submitting, that we, we didn't want each of them to, to have to come up with a design because it isn't fair to ask people to work for nothing. Uh, but, but rather to, uh, to get it down to one, uh, and then we can work out the budget and, and that, uh, with, with the city as time goes on. It's, it, it is a difficult time.
Yeah, okay. All right, um, well, I'd entertain a motion then, if nobody has any more questions and to-
Me, I got my hand up.
Oh, I don't, yeah, there it is, okay, sorry.
Um, I was just wondering if, if Debbie has that information handy, um, could she give it to us? I remember two years ago, because I think I made the motion to delete $75,000 for an art, for the art budget. And I know we've had, um, you know, the, the police building that has a, you know, percentage taken out for art. And I was just curious if it's at her fingertips. Would that be an acceptable thing or something you have to search for, Debbie?
No, I've got, because we just put the, um, budget book together. Um, in 2017, 18, the general fund transferred 50,000 to the percent for art fund. And in 2018, 19, we have transferred 10,000 from the general fund. Um, the beginning balance for this year, 2019, 20, is 128,000. And there's about 10,000 of transfers on capital projects. So, there's about 138,000 if you don't take back the transfer from the general fund.
So, we've transferred about $60,000.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, um, any other questions? So, with that, entertain a motion. The motion would be to, you know, approve the recommendation to contract with Pete Beeman, to have the staff and art committee go these next steps.
So moved.
Who is that, Mitch?
It's Mitch, yeah.
Okay. Is there a?
Second.
And a second from Mr. Casper? Great, thank you. Deanna, you have your hand up?
I do, but I'm just curious about making a motion to move forward with negotiating a contract when we aren't giving them an amount.
Well, they do have an amount. If you subtract sixty thousand from a hundred and thirty-eight, you have for sure the money that is restricted for art only.
Okay.
And the other sixty is the only thing that is of question at a future time. So any other questions, discussion?
Where's my hand? How do I raise my?
Oh, I don't see it showing, but go ahead.
They want me to find the thing than to raise my hand. So if you were to proceed with negotiations, assuming the seventy-eight thousand, would there be an extended timeline? I mean, suppose he did it over two years, or a year and a half, or two budget cycles, or if more money was raised, I mean, would there be a deadline for the product creation? Trying to extend a fund availability to rely on, or to fundraise for, or whatever we have to do, that's just my thought.
So Larry, I guess the question would be, because none of us really have an idea of how long sculptures take to be made, and kind of a time element of, you negotiate the actual sculpture art itself and its cost, and then we would end up approving or declining that. What is such a payment process or completion process?
Well, it varies with the individual piece as to how grandiose the piece is. We were hoping that it was going to be quite a major piece and quite large and sitting there in front of the LCCC building. The, his previous pieces can take up to a year.
Okay. And I'm assuming this negotiation process would take a couple of months or whatever? Because you're, you would be, he would be creating something, or a schematic or something, what he has in mind?
Yes, he would try to give us ideas of what he has in mind, either through writing or through sketches and that sort of thing, so that we can see that. It's, I'm reminded of the, I have a son-in-law who likes to send me emails with cartoons. He sent one yesterday that hit me right in his, you know, it's a picture of a bunch of people in an airplane, and the speaker comes on and says, this is your pilot speaking, I'm working from home. Made me think what strange times we're living in right now. But we're, so far, we're just saying that if we're going to start somewhere, we have to start with picking someone, and then we've got to work out staying within budgets and doing what we can to, to make it work. It's a hard time, but nothing's going to be done without being passed through the city council.
And Judy, I think your question is a good one, they're working off their budget anyway, the up to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand is still in the realm. And again, just the timing, depending on the actual timing and what the environment is around us, would be a key help for me, anyway. So, yep, go ahead.
I think also when we had the dragon, or lake monster created, that was done in two segments as well. It was extended because it cost more or something, but that was a piece that was done by extending funding.
Well, actually, and that's one I'm, I guess it's a good question of Larry, a contract is a contract, I assume, Larry, and if, you know, I don't know, is it a fixed cost contract? Because we know artists can get creative and go too grandiose.
Well, that's one of the reasons that I was tickled with Pete. He says he's never gone over budget of whatever he agreed in, out of all the pieces that he's done throughout the northwest and up and down the coast. So that speaks well for his.
I'm confident, I'm confident our contract would say he'd pay if he went over the budget, so he'd eat it.
Well, that's a matter of what we have to negotiate with artists.
Exactly. So Judy, that's what happened on the other one. We didn't, we, the city, didn't pay anymore, we stayed with our contract. Nobody else has a hand up? So there's a motion to move forward, as recommended by the public arts committee, and a second. Any further discussion? And there's no money at this point, so we could do just a voice vote, Mr. Appicello, okay? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Anybody who opposes? Hearing none? All right, so Larry, you've got your, into your next steps.
Okay, one last thing that I'd just like to say, amazing support from Ed Drysdale and his staff. Just, they've done an awful lot. Most of this was done before we had this thing come up and bite us, the situation with the disease, but I was really, really impressed, because like they say, I've been through with two other towns, and this was a sheer joy with how much support we had from the city, and we appreciate it.
That's good, good to hear. Well, we appreciate what the committee's doing, so thank you. Thank, push it back to the committee.
Okay, thank you all.
All right. Okay, so let's move on to, we have order number 202001, an order approving a six-month lease extension from McKay's Market.
I'll take this. Essentially, we sent McKay's lease, they're still running it through their process. Obviously, the pandemic situation caused some delays for them, as they were concerned with other things, so just to take the pressure off, we've requested a six-month extension to the lease under the same terms and conditions. Apparently, they're willing to do this, so asked for approval of the order.
Your motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve order 2020-01, granting a six-month extension to the existing lease with McKay's Market under the same terms and conditions.
Who, second?
Diane.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion? All right. Roll call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Mitch Parsons?
Yes.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Judy Casper?
Yes.
Deanna Hinton?
Yes.
Riley Hoglund?
Uh, yes.
And Diane Kuz?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. All right, we have Debbie with resolution 2020-08, budget transfers.
Hey, I just had a couple items on the budget transfer. Where'd my file go? So when I originally did the budget transfer to put in the five hundred thousand for this fiscal year that we did on the PERS match, I put the general fund amount in the 11091, which is just kind of our non-department fund. But I think it would make more sense to actually put it within the individual fund, individual departments within the general fund, so that's just taking money out of the non-department fund and moving it into the departments. Those departments are city admin, finance, library, court, city attorney, planning, et cetera. So that's no change to the budget, it's just moving it into the individual departments. The second part was, there was an approval in a prior meeting, and I'm sorry, I did not look up the date, to purchase Polaris Ranger, a couple Polaris Ranger vehicles for the beach use, or some kind of use, I'm not sure which that is. And that was for thirty-five thousand, so this is to provide the appropriation for that. And then the third request is, in the current year budget, there was about ninety-seven thousand of the marijuana tax revenue that was allocated to the parks capital fund, and we have had some significant expenses this year in the parks operational funds in cleaning up transient rooms, transient camps. And so staff would like to propose moving that revenue from the parks capital fund to the parks operations fund, so that the marijuana tax revenue is helping to fund the transient camp cleanups. And that is for ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and nine dollars. And that's it.
Questions? Riley?
What would, you know, as far as homeless cleanup camps, I know it's, is this for outside, or is this our own personnel cleaning these up?
I think this is a biohazard type of cleanup, where you, I don't think are, it's for external, it's for an external company to come in and clean it up.
So this is, this was done with a request for proposals, or how are we purchasing the services to clean up these biohazard? You know, do we have a standing contract or a company? You know, I'm all for having the right amount of cleanup, I mean, I walk in the woods all the time, and I tell you, the things that I've seen are horrible. So, I mean, I understand the severity of the situation when we're cleaning up these homeless camps, but I also want to make sure that we're doing it in the right way.
Yeah, Jeannie's actually administered that contracting, so I'm not sure on that.
I just haven't, I don't recall seeing a request for proposals for biocleanup, that's all, at the council level.
They may have been done on a one-on-one basis, where we've cleaned up one place versus another place.
Ron, can you weigh in?
Yes, so in following our purchasing rules, depending on the amount of it, we can go out and look for and find rebids without, without needing for a request for proposal, and that's the path that Jeannie, she went out and looked for the prices based on the companies that will do this kind of cleanup and then selected one. And it hasn't been, we have not been at where it's, you get all of the projects that are associated with this, it has been, as Debbie said, on a case-by-case basis.
So now that we're at a hundred thousand dollars of cleanup a year for this, for this services, I think it's warrants a little bit more of a, you know, process, other than just, let's just transfer it?
Not that, not that high. It's fifty, it's forty thousand for this year, fifty thousand we're budgeting for it for next year. And that will do about four cleanups.
Judy, you got your hand up?
Yeah, I just need a clarification here. On number one, you talked about the appropriations of five hundred thousand to participate in the PERS match program, and then I get confused here. This request is to move three hundred some thousand to different departments. How did the five hundred thousand and the three hundred thousand, why are they in the same sentence?
Oh, I apologize. The total PERS match was five hundred thousand. Of that amount, three hundred thousand four hundred and sixty was attributable to the general fund, and the other two hundred thousand was in different funds, the water fund and sewer fund, for example. And those funds all have one department each, so they went into the specific department. So it's just the general fund portion of the five hundred thousand.
Okay, but we've already paid them?
Yes, we have. And so this is kind of an in-out, it's not affecting any fund balance in any fund or the budget amount or anything, it's just.
Okay, my God.
In hindsight, I wish I'd done it this way instead.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
And just as a reminder, the money going into the parks was, as Ron or as Debbie indicated, it was originally in the capital fund for development of the parks, when we split the marijuana tax last budget season. But it seemed a more appropriate use today of cleaning up the sites. Any other questions?
Can I just ask how?
Go ahead, go ahead, Ron.
I just would like to know how it is that we're managing these sites, you know, or do we have a schedule or routine, or is it complaint-driven, or, you know, how are we preventing future, you know, at a fifty thousand dollars a year, that's significant, you know, and I want to see that, you know, we're also taking the steps needed to really prevent this as well, and not just clean up the mess.
Ron?
It's a little bit of both, both complaint-driven, and also our crews are out regularly patrolling and going through our open space. The, one of the areas that we have had continual problems is property that we're trying to develop, and so in time, that will go away. The best thing that we can do is clear out the underbrush, so that, and so that it creates opportunity for people to be in that area. Creation of trails, the more opportunities we get people into the open space that we have, the less likely you will find campers. And so that's what we're trying to do.
What, can we put signs up saying that, look, this is a crime, you know, where you will be prosecuted or charged or something about dumping? I mean, essentially, that's what it is. I mean, yes, it's homeless living, but it's, you're dumping trash. You know, I could show you on Southeast Third Street where there's places right now, you know, so it's just, you know, and it's within feet of a road. It's not, it's not a hundred yards into the dense woods, it's literally just beyond a salal bush, or just beyond some rhododendron. And so it's not, it's not, you know, and there are well-worn footpaths and well-worn locations, and say, hey, look, enough is enough. We're going to prosecute, we're going to, you know, this is dumping, so, you know, how are we, we got to show them, hey, look, this is some serious stuff.
Okay.
So I can make the motion to that Mr. Bridges suggested, I forget what it is now.
Let's do it, approve, approve resolution 2020-08.
May I make that motion, please?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that from Judy Casper? Or is it Diane?
No, it was Casper.
Was it Casper, okay.
I don't know where the hand thing is.
Yeah?
I haven't said anything, I don't know where the hand is.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Kathy?
Mitch Parsons?
Yes.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Judy Casper?
Yes.
Deanna Hinton?
Yes.
Riley Hoglund?
Yes.
Diane Kuz?
Yes.
Yes.
Diane Kuz?
Yes.
And Rick Mark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Diane, if you look at the bottom of your screen, you put your cursor at the bottom, it says "Participants," if you click on that, you'll see the raise hand button.
Oh, okay, thank you, I did it on my computer this time versus the iPad, so it's everybody.
All right, there's a convert. Welcome back to the computers. All right, let's see, we have council priorities and goals, it's the next item.
Well, this, Mr. Mayor, comes from your meeting, clear back in January or February, in which you identified some goals that you wanted to pursue. It may be good to talk about this item, plus the potential aid for, as a result of the COVID-19 virus, in the same discussion, as they may affect each other. I had included in the packet, a list of the goals as I put together. Counselor Casper sent some information that I have forwarded on to you, on rephrasing those and changing them a little bit, and so at this point, I'll turn it over back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, what is the intent? You to approve these, discuss further? What's, yeah, go ahead, Ron.
As we have, as we have worked together on preparing the goals, ultimately, yes, it is for you to approve those, and then the staff's actions over the coming year will be based upon the goals and the priorities that you set. I would like to point out one thing that is pertinent to the Parks and Recreation goal, which is, which one of the actions is to develop Taft Park. We did receive the no further action letter from the Department of Environmental Quality, and Richard and Jeannie and I are now working on going forward with the possible purchase of that property.
Great, oh, that's good news. So before we go through this, I guess I'm, this, this, a good list, and, but it was done in an entirely different environment, I think that's why Ron suggesting mix our second item with this, and that's finances. I guess, you know, as I went through these, they seemed secondary to me, you know, I'm caught up with how are we going to recover from this economic crisis, and granted, it's only been five weeks, but it's been a long five weeks, devastating, and Ken Murphy tells me plan on 12 to 18 months for recovery. So, you know, I'm a little, I'm a little gun-shy, and I'll, like the rest of us probably admit, I haven't looked at the proposed budget that has just come out, so I don't know what Ron and the budget officer has done going forward, but we have seen what we've done for the remainder of this fiscal year, and that's a significant cutback in revenue and capital projects, and personnel on hold hiring. So somehow, I'd hate to have, you know, someone, you know, pointing to our priorities that we made in January as a guiding light, for how we're gonna act the rest of the, you know, coming fiscal year, because it's so unknown. And I'm wrestling with myself, so I'm looking for advice, thoughts, because if I were to do anything, I highlighted, you know, to me, economic development is, you know, the emphasis for the next 12 months. So, Judy?
Yeah, I agree, I think it's good to have our list here, and I just want you to know that I made goal statements, because that's what I used to do in my other life, but I agree, economic development under this new list also includes housing, and, you know, marketing with what finances we have left, and how to direct them so we can proceed from here, I think is of the utmost importance. And, you know, keep other things, like emergency preparedness, up there too, because we've certainly learned from this experience. And just hang on to this list for future reference when, when it lifts, and maybe we could come back to it, or something pops up that we can address, focus on it, if it doesn't have any great financial distribution from our budget, like maybe prior, you know, some things from the code enforcement. So I agree with you, Mr. Mayor.
Other, other thoughts? Yes, Diane, I see your hand.
You see my hand, because I can't figure the other one out yet. No, I'm, I'm in agreement with you, I think at this time, I would like to take some time and really relook at what we've done. Our world has changed, and economic development is probably very much a priority. So I would like to take some time, maybe do another work session to really relook at this.
Anyone else want to add niche?
I 100% agree with both of you.
Just we're raising our hands?
Yeah, I guess so. Go ahead, Deanna.
Hi, I couldn't get my, my button up soon enough. I just want to say, I think that's fine, one of the reasons this came up is, I doubt that I'm alone, but I was curious about where our priorities are, I asked Ron, you know, where did we leave it, and shouldn't we reconsider things because of the virus situation we're in now, and look at our budget, and just kind of rethink it? I would like to keep in front of us, though, the economic development, and the code enforcement, and of course, emergency prep, but also the community engagement. I don't know if you guys are getting comments from your part of the world, but I am, and people are requesting more information in a more timely way, and I don't know if they're not accessing the city website, or if we need more visibility on Facebook, or what it is, but we just, we need to be proactive in how we're talking about this, even if there isn't any changes. Like, for example, we still, very luckily, are only at four cases in the county, and that's over 11 days, I think that's fabulous news, if we can hold it. And so there's good things to be saying about this as well, and that we are working on, on our budget and other things, as people are asking those questions, we need to be very proactive in providing information for them, in a variety of ways, maybe even, you know, a letter to the editor in the newspaper from new mayor, or something, we just need to be constantly out there with that drumbeat, that we're working on it, we're concerned, we're, you know, we're caring about our community, and we're making some steps to move forward.
Rick, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, just second what everybody's saying, I would like to see a work session to, so we can maybe talk more comfortably about these options for relief. Frankly, I mean, throughout this meeting tonight, every time we've talked about spending another six-digit figure on something, my stomach has been tightening up, thinking, we don't really know what we can be doing right now. And, and, and I voted in favor of these proposals, because I also have this feeling like, I think we have all this, have a feeling that, that things are going to get back to normal, and we want to show that, that things are going to be normal too, and I love the idea of a big art project, and that's going to send a great message, but for the moment, we don't really know the impact of the losing, whatever, whether it's losing TRT, or deferring utility bills, or, or how do we recover from that? So I, I, I think this COVID relief, I'm sure there were people tuning in today, wondering, what is it that the city is doing tonight to give some relief? And I think they're not going to be happy with the answers at this point, so, yeah, in general terms, all those other priorities that are listed, Judy and Deanna and everybody have a great point about marketing, and, you know, keeping our focus on these things that we need to focus on, and of course, infrastructure and all that, but our number one priority right now needs to be helping people who are hurt by what's going on out there.
Judy?
So, piggyback on Rick's statement, helping people that are out there, I think we owe it to ourselves to look at tonight, to discuss, how can we help the people that are out there? I know that, like, people that have under five full-time employees that aren't going to be able to apply for bank loans, there must be some way that we can assist those people that, that don't have access to funds, they're the pulse of our community, and there's nowhere else for them to go.
But Judy, if I could interrupt you, because that would be the next item on the agenda?
Okay.
If, if we could resolve these priority items, and I think what I hear, Ron, and, you know, help me, because I know, you use this as a guiding force, guiding light, and what I hear from folks to keep, keep this document on the table, but if there was priorities given, it would be the economic growth, emergency preparedness, community engagement, and kind of code enforcement, those four items?
Yes.
And that's not to take away from the standard, real first priority of utilities, sewer, water, police. But if we have the priority, it would be going to economic recovery, economic development first. Is that...
Not necessary, Mayor, for you to set those goals tonight. I would ask one thing, that we did put this into the budget message in the draft form, so when you look at it open tonight, if you don't pursue with it, just know that I'm going to be taking that out tomorrow morning, and not including it, so I just want to let everybody know that we did try to include something least in the draft form.
Okay.
But no, there's no, there's no reason why you would have to move forward on these, we can hold them to another day, and just focus your time on, on the emergency that's at hand.
Okay. Is that all right with everybody? Consensus? All right. Let's then move to this next item, and that's the COVID-19 potential aid. And Ron, you know, put a bunch of material together, ideas, thoughts, and a lot of them, people have sent in our voice. And I, I think, on the cover, I alluded to it, but we all got from Ron, his earlier, how to end the fiscal year, the next three months, the loss, and Ron, I don't know if you wanted to visit, any about that, first and foremost?
Sure. Let me discuss a little bit of what we're experiencing right now. With, with the shutdown of so many of the businesses in the city, we're, we're really experiencing losses of revenues in three areas. The first is in the transient room tax, which is estimated to average at about, at this time of the year, at about $635,000, $640,000 a month. And then, of course, the community center has closed down, and so all of the recreation fees, and the community center fees, those are lost revenues as well. And then the third area that we're experiencing, and I don't have an estimate on this, because we quite frankly don't know yet, is, is the loss of revenue in our utility funds, our water and sewer funds. We are seeing the consumption of our water decrease by about 45% to 50% in usage, so where that really affects us is in the, is in the area of the overage, the amount of the overage of your base amount. Debbie ran some numbers for me today, to give me a little bit of an idea of what that actually means. When you look at for May and June as an average, we collect about $624,000. And of that amount, the sewer, 141, the sewer collects $175,000 in the base fee, and then an additional $141,000 in the, the amount that's over the base fee. The water collects about $188,000 in its base fee, and its water overage amount is about $120,000. So where we will, looks like we'll see the loss is in the area of the, of the amount that's over the base fee. So the, and the longer we can continue with things shut down, the bigger impact it will have. Now...
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Since the water and sewer rates are, I mean, they're user fees, so they're based on, it's revenue that we bring in to balance off some expense, so I assume that there's some expense associated with that overage, and is that expense not being incurred? Does that make sense?
No, the expense is still being incurred, because you still have personnel costs, you still have material costs, you still have the plants that are running, whatever the volume is, the plants still have to run, the work still has to go forward, so you're, you're still incurring costs. Now, what we did is that about a month ago, we looked at what we would need to cut or delay over the course of the next, this last quarter, three months, and if this were to continue, the effects of this were to continue through the final quarter of this fiscal year. We identified about $1.8 million in either delayed capital projects, or programs that could, would be cut, delayed, so forth, to carry us through the end of the year. The idea really behind that was not just simply to, to, to cut based upon what we're going to lose, but it was also to protect the fund balances for next year's budget, so that we would have those available to us, in order, in order to use those as part of next year's budget. If, if our loss of revenue is only affected in this quarter, we will be okay. If it extends beyond that, then of course, it becomes more difficult with each week, with each month that it carries on.
All right. So, and that's the unknown.
It is, and I might point out that in the budget that you received, with the Budget Committee today, as part of the Budget Committee today, this is a very unusual budget, because it's very difficult to predict exactly what the revenues are. So even if the budget were approved exactly as I presented it, we still have identified half a million to a million dollars right off the bat, where we've said, these projects, these expenses will not go forward until we, until we, until we know for sure the impact. So even with an adopted budget, many things in it would remain on hold until we know the full impact of what's going to happen.
How would you like to proceed? Because you've made a bunch of, or put in your write-up, your staff report, different suggestions or questions people had, ideally?
Well, I provided you with a lot of information, and I think perhaps one of the things that I could use as part of a, just the beginning point, we provided not only information about requests that we have made, but also some of the information about the new federal legislation that provides funding. but also some of the information about the new federal legislation that provides funding, the actions of our, of our state as it pertains to things like evictions and so forth. And, and what I was hoping was that in the course of this discussion, we would be able to find those things that are somewhat unique to us and not necessarily overlap with what other governments are doing to assist. And there's a couple of areas where if you look at what is our lane, what, what do we do well? There's a couple of areas where I wanted to make mention of things that we may be able to consider. The first is in the area of our, of our businesses. Ed has already begun a program where he has been buying gift certificates, passes, things like that to infuse some funds into the business economy, but also to provide the main nearby when this is done and our businesses reopen, then we'll bring people back. It might be a hotel stay, it might be a gift certificate to a store, it might be movie theater passes, whatever it may be. He's been doing that on somewhat of a small scale, in the tens of thousands of dollars. One of the things we'd like to propose for you to consider is to do that on a much larger scale. What we're thinking of is in the, in the area of about a half a million dollars that could be used out of the trans, out of the Explore Lincoln City reserves. That is scheduled to be at about $1.7 million by the end of the year. We've allowed that to build up over time in order to use it for building a visitor center. This would simply delay that construction and would, would allow us to infuse a large amount of money into the economy. It also has the ability to create a multiplier effect where the, the, the gift certificates, the passes, and so forth are not redeemable until the businesses reopen. So that it's an attempt to bring the businesses back in, they have a pass to come and stay at a hotel. They come, then of course they're going to want to go to a restaurant and so forth, and it creates a multiplier effect. So it, it has a way of infusing cash into the economy now for businesses that may be struggling. And, and also to provide an incentive for our tourists to come back and infuse the cash into our economy a second time. The second thing that we'd like you to consider is in the area of our water bills and sewer bills, excuse me, our utility bills, and, and the effect that we might have in either a delay or a utility bill holiday or something to that effect. Again, what we're finding is that our water bills are in two different, we're finding two different categories, both those that are residential and commercial, in which providing some, providing some sort of amount of relief would be helpful. We again, we're looking at somewhere between a half a million to $600,000 or the equivalent of one month's of the water bill. That would come from our rainy day fund, which is our unappropriated fund balance that could be used. The other thing that we'd like for you to consider, and it's kind of wide open on this, is that these, these should also be means tested. There should be a set of criteria so that we are giving the biggest help to those that are in the greatest need. Just use me as an example. I'm fortunate enough to still be employed and still be earning my income. I don't need to have my water bill, a water bill holiday for me. Whereas somebody who has now been laid off and is unemployed would have a much greater need. So we, we think that there ought to be some sort of means testing. I know that Council Casper has thought of several things that she would like to interject into this conversation of how we can really make the, the use of the city funds go the farthest to helping people.
Two excellent suggested areas. One, I, I like the discussion on recovery and positioning it to have businesses recover as well as feeding them some revenue early on, so it's a twofold effect. And I agree, the utility bills is certainly something that's in our area of expertise and our, what we produce. So that's something we can control. Thoughts out there, discussion? You know, it's a good list of reminding people, ourselves, what is coming down the pike is small business relief funds, the stimulus packages coming to individuals, payroll, benefits. So it's right around the corner, certainly for people are struggling and concerned and frustrated. But I think you add also the governor's actions on evictions, lack, not having evictions, and, you know, mortgage relief and everything else helps. And Ron, even your, our city's own not pursuing shut-offs and late fees on the utilities is a relate that kind of takes some of that frustration away. So, does somebody want to jump in?
Yeah, all good ideas. I'm curious on the, Ed, on the, your gift certificate proposal, how do those get distributed? Or how do we know who would get those? Do the businesses make that decision or how's that work?
A question we're now just trying to work out. As Ron mentioned, we've done it on a very, very limited basis. And, you know, A, we want to see some money to go into the town right now. B, we want some tools to be that little bit of a bright spot while you're stuck at home. The working title for the whole, whole campaign is looking forward to Lincoln City, making it very clear now is not the time to come. But when the time does come, you know, here's a stay, here's a vacation, here's whatever. How we fairly distribute that among the businesses? In talking to my staff, we're thinking about maybe constructing it so it's a lot like our grant program where you apply and instead of just being given a check, we will buy something from. I don't know that's how we're going to do it, that's kind of the current thought right now. But how do we do it fairly? How do we get the money to the right businesses? Those are big questions and we're just now trying to work that out.
Riley, you had a question? You're muted.
Sorry, I was like, there's like, you can pick the little hand or you can just click on mute. And I was like, I'm not trying to get that little precise movement over here, let me go with the big button. So this is great, it's great, it's wonderful, you know, that obviously this is for tourism and all that stuff. And that's, you know, one aspect of our community and that's wonderful. You know, as Ron had mentioned, that there are some people who aren't going to need supplemental, you know, supplemental things. And also thinking in that line is, is there an opportunity for people who also wish to participate in the revitalization during this time of people, because not everybody's struggling, but may not, also may not know how to provide assistance? And is, would the VC, would Explore Lincoln City or the city be able to be open to receive money from people wishing to participate in this gift card program?
I, I honestly hadn't thought about that, so let me give you a definite maybe. We often, governments, we included, will often use the city's funding as a leverage. And so if we have, if we have the ability to leverage that, I think that would be fantastic. Now, one of the, in my discussions with Council Casper, one of the things that she mentioned was taking the next couple of weeks to really put together the criteria so that, so that by May 1st, we're really ready to go on this. So it's not haphazard, that we've really got a good, a good plan in place that will make it go the farthest.
Council Casper, you want it?
Yeah, just expanding on that idea. We have small businesses here, and so my idea would be to take five or less full-time employee businesses. And the business would have to have a physical storefront in Lincoln City. Would have to have a current license or permit. Would have to show a loss of income due to the virus. And it couldn't be a national chain or a nonprofit. Of course, the person have to be over 18 years of age. It can be used for keep-in-operation, labor, rent, mortgages. And that's kind of what $2,500 one-time money would be used for, is to keep some kind of a down payment if you have a lease or a mortgage going on like, like the governor mentioned. But you have to at least put some kind of money down. And so you could apply by, we have the, like, the nonprofit grant form that we use, something similar to that. They'd provide their financials and state the purpose that it's to be used for. It would be for like hair salons, tanning parlor, surf shop, coffee shop, tattoo parlors, things like that. But it would be maybe $50,000 given out, no loan repayment, $2,500 to the applicant and have it, a committee to choose the, make sure the financials are in order and deem the appropriate money. That's my idea.
So Judy, you're, just for clarification, you're then a different criteria, a different program than what Ed was talking about with the-
I believe so, yeah. I mean, they're similar, but this is to get some help with their leases or mortgage or immediate, like right now, by May 1st. Yeah, and Ed's is a great idea too. This would just be for the little guys.
I guess staying with Ed's, one of the questions I would have, Ed, how do your money, and I, I would assume it has to be more marketing, where Judy's explanation or criteria wasn't into marketing Lincoln City? Is that probably a distinction?
Yeah, but, but I, I think they're both aimed at the same thing. You know, with ours, there, there are three purposes to it. One is to get money into the town right now to businesses that need it. And aiming a lot of that at the little guys actually sounds really good to me. That's, that would be my preference, the coffee shops and surf shops. And, and it's all the things that, that make this town special anyway. You know, all the, the fun little places we have, I would love to, to be able to, to get them some revenue. The second thing it would do, and, and I'm sure you've noticed some of the good news stories we've been able to place, that in the midst of all the doom and gloom, it's like, look at the wonderful things that are happening in Lincoln City. That would allow us to multiply that. And right now, through contests and sweepstakes and shining a light on a lot of our small businesses, we can, we can position ourselves very well for when the cloud finally lifts and it's time to, to invite people back again. And then thirdly, if we're literally giving away vacations or big chunks of vacations, when the time comes, the money we spent on that, the money we gave to these businesses, it will come back into town. So there's three pieces to it. An immediate benefit financially, a positioning for the future, and then planting the seeds for future vacations when the time comes. I, I think there's overlap between what I want to do and what Judy is talking about, and I think we work together. They're not mutually exclusive, but a lot of it's one and the same.
Diane, you've got your hand up? You're on mute.
Unmute me, unmute me. I, I like the idea of the gift, gift certificates because that always comes back. But it really hits more of the tourism, the hotels, the restaurants, coffee shops, retail. It doesn't address the hairdressers, or the dog grooming and dog daycare, all these people that also are not really tourist-based, but they are so vital to the people who live here that have been hurt really badly. So I like the idea where Judy has more of a grant program for those kind of people. And then the others that we get people here because it's too cold, we use the money in town, but we use it towards tourism that brings them here, and then they spend more money. So it's both, but I think we have to think about the ones that aren't tourist-based, aren't so.
Ed, I guess the question I, that's the question I had really of you, is your $500,000, if we ended up utilizing that, can it go to non-tourists, you know, like the hair salon? Is there a reason why you couldn't buy gift certificates to, you know, dog care or childcare or those kinds of-
I think that's a question I'd have to throw over to the city attorney and maybe Ron. The money I have is earmarked specifically for tourism, and it involves state law and local ordinance. How much flexibility there is and how much we can bend the definition of tourism? That, that's, that's a question, I think, that's a little above my grade level.
Diana, you have your hand up?
Yes, I'm, I just want to make sure that we don't forget, or are we going to consider the funding that's available through the Small Business Association? And, I mean, I just don't want to double dip, that's a very nice way to say this. But I just, I want to provide something as quickly as possible, but I also don't want to not think about other opportunities that people have or applying for grants, for loans, for loans that can be forgiven. There's a lot of opportunity out there to help people with getting their, getting enough money to pay their employees, for example, to pay their utility, I mean, there's just a lot of opportunity out there. So I'd like us to be real mindful of that.
So what I'm, I'm wondering about, if, if we reach agreement or see tonight, you know, that we could direct staff to, to take, redirect, say, $500,000 of Ed's, you know, overflowed and budget. And, but, but set it aside for the purpose of, of recovery or call it what it is. And then, Diana, your suggestion, I think, was the, a committee or, or somebody to start setting criteria with Ed and Judy and others to, what would it look like? And, and we could see where maybe the gaps, you know, keeping in mind small business administration, funding and everything else, and maybe where the holes are from that. Does it be, you know, it's great ideas around, I think it's contingent upon where the actual money comes from of how we can use it, and something might pop out.
I, I think we'll probably find out that we can get a little creative with it too. You know, if we had the ultimate dog spa weekend that included the, you know, the doggy daycare and, and whatnot, or if it's the, you know, ultimate girls' weekend where you're going to spas and the hairdresser and this and that, and, and, you know, just making this up on the fly. But there, there may be ways to incorporate some of these businesses we don't usually think is tourists into some experiences that maybe highlight them and would be something that somebody would want to do if they came here from out of town. The one thing I don't want to do is just say, you know, the fifth person who clicks like on this Facebook post gets a, a night at the, you know, Koho kind of thing. What, what I want to do is to literally offer vacations, offer themed experiences. You know, for somebody that has an adventure kind of thing, we can give them fat tire biking and surfing lessons and this and that and the other. I, I think it'd be fun to just lay out what all we have and where the need is, just put them all out on the table and see how we can assemble them and make them into something that somebody would love to win and come down here and experience.
Ron, you had? Your hand up?
I do, Mr. Mayor. So again, I'm looking at two parts to this. One dealing with Ed's funds, the other dealing with the, the water and sewer funds. But on this one, may I make a suggestion? That, Mayor, you appoint a subcommittee of three elected officials to work with Debbie and Ed and me, and also invite Lori Arsetaurus to participate to bring back something to you on the 27th of how this would work so that it could then go forward in the beginning of May.
Okay. Richard, you have your hand up? You're still muted. You're still muted. Come on, twig.
I was just gonna add that with this, I thought we were gonna have a special session in the legislature and I was hoping that they were gonna say something about the use of TRT funds in the session. So I'm not sure, I wouldn't hold my breath, but I think we ought to check that out because obviously Ed's money comes with strings. And I think there's a lot of creative things being said to, you know, as to the proposed use, but it should be nice if we could get some more flexibility.
Yeah, agreed. You're muted.
All right. I was just wondering if there's a way to say, let them explain to us how it is that they're affected from this by tourism. So, yeah, we're trying to think creatively. We'll let the businesses know, hey, show us how this negatively impacted you. And here's this other list of things that we're gonna require to see, but tell us how this has impacted you negatively. I mean, I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to learn who thinks they're valuable in our tourism economy and really give the businesses a chance to say, hey, I'm important to this community and it's tourism in these ways and really get a real feel for the community.
I agree. Rick, you.
Yeah, I think that's a great way to, and it kind of goes, I wasn't thinking along those lines, but it kind of fits in with what I had in mind. Riley, by the way, you're now a disembodied head, at least on my screen. It's a little disconcerting, but only a little. I was wondering about the means testing, which I think is appropriate. And I mean, could it work that we invite people to ask for, this goes to utility bill deferrals and things like that, that we invite people to ask if they want that, if they need that, and then you would have to make an initiative so that if you felt comfortable with your, you know, situation right now, you don't need it, that you just would ask for it. But I don't know how that would actually work.
Ron, you have a thought?
Yeah, the thing that, just like in the same way that we were thinking with the with the transient room tax, there would need to be some sort of process whereby people could make a request. The only real concern I have over that is just how many requests we'll get and how hard it will be to process that many requests. But but this is of significance and of importance that we could put together the staffing necessary to cross that process it. The most important thing we do is to establish what the criteria is for receiving these receiving these grants, funds, monies, whatever we call them.
Okay. So I like the idea of the subcommittee on the spending Ed's money. Are there three counselors that, you know, want to weigh in on that? I see Rick, Riley, and Judy. How about Rick, Riley, and Judy, is that all right?
Yep.
So I mean, you'd be busting tail to get some criteria before our next meeting, right? What about, Ron, is your suggestion then let staff tackle the utilities?
I think so. What I would ask of you is that if you have any suggestions on criteria, to send them to us and we'll just start simply developing that. This one's a little bit, it's a little bit different in one sense in that there's not necessarily cash that's going out, it's more of a forgiveness of a bill. And so so what it really means for us is that a loss of revenue and how that will affect our operations.
So with that, I'm wondering aloud, should that even, would it be better to put parameters around the unknown and say X dollars is in this fund for such a situation? And I guess that would be part of the recommendation, you know, rather than just the unknown. It might be.
Could you do a, would you do a first come, first served kind of thing or would that be troublesome?
Well, you would to some degree if it's a limited fund. The other, I just remember too, though, you know, thinking about apartment and landlords who get stuck with a deferred or non-paid utility bill. So one of the criteria we definitely have to make sure is that it's a direct pay or something to the utility bill, not not a check in hand. Not that anything would ever happen. So is that you, oh, Diane?
Oh, I'm not muted. Okay, on the utilities, I just want everybody to be aware, I'm not sure how many people know that people on unemployment who have even put in for it, it's been over three weeks receiving nothing, no word. So we have a lot of people with unemployment that supposed to be getting it that has not gotten it. And they don't even know, there's no communication. And if, you know, that we that check they're supposed to get, well, if you have it mailed to you, it's gonna could be over twenty weeks before they even get that. So we have a group of unemployed service workers who are now are to the point where they have no money left. They haven't, they paid their rent, but come May one, they're no place to go, they don't have money to pay rent. So those are the people I'm concerned more about for utilities, et cetera, on how to deal with that. That's just.
And remember, again, that's where I hear you. As I pointed out, for the utilities anyway, we're not doing any shut off. So, you know, I think, and we're not doing late fees either. So in fact, and I think Ron was pointing out that, you know, well, I guess it was just water production and sewer production, not how much has come in from revenue, but, you know, it's the debt clearly, and that raises frustration, but it's not at the point of, and it's not going to happen in the city of shutting off your utilities. And the same thing with mortgage and rent, there can't be evictions. So, you know, not that that takes much pressure off, but it should to some extent, it's an old debt and unless you get, you know, total grants, you know, because I'm hoping, depending on the length of time, if there's, we can get a handle on this, maybe we can just do a, an extension out, you know, maybe some grant, but have the other on deferral to be paid back over the next year or something. I hear you. Mr. Hoogland, are you still there?
Yes. You know, it would be great to have like maybe a sliding pay scale, like I think is kind of what it sounded like you were saying of, you know, if if your business does really, is typically really well because it's highly tourism based, you could probably pay it back in six months, but somebody who's has maybe a slower income model, they could have an extended payback period, I think is, is that's what you were saying there?
Yeah, something to do, you know, just not have grants, but, you know, have it deferred and had it where it can be absorbed the whole time and not so adversely affecting the city Ron, you're.
I'm sorry, you answered my question.
Riley, are you okay?
Okay, good. I'm good, I'm trying to do it.
It looks like you're playing around back there.
This is Richard. Was that unanimous consent on the appointment of the subcommittee?
Anybody object to the subcommittee? Nobody objects. Yes, it was unanimous.
Okay.
And the same thing with the directing staff to come back with some process and means testing for utilities.
All right, thank you.
Uh huh, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And this is by the twenty-seventh of April?
Yes.
Okay.
What else you got to do, you're at home?
True.
Okay, is that, is that enough on that agenda item for now? Okay. Our last item then is new name for villages at Cascade Head is on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, on this one, I listened to the meeting two weeks ago, if you recall, I was attending, and it seems like a long time ago that I attended that meeting, but that was just two weeks ago. And as my understanding that the council did not want to proceed with with going through the legal process of changing the names at this time, but that doesn't necessarily prevent you from going forward with just selecting a name. And so I wanted to bring this back forward to you. Council Hinton had some suggestions that were sent to you on criteria you can use when you're weighing the decision. See if you would like to go forward in at least selecting a name, a new name for the villages. And then at a future day, we'd take care of the legal process when it makes sense.
Yeah. I wondered why this was back on, because I don't think there was any disagreement with council that, you know, the place needed a new name. I thought it was more timing and that we had more important things to be, you know, dealing with, and it was just, you know, more of that issue. But, you know, Deanna, do you want to weigh in?
Sure. And I don't, you know, I don't know if we need to do this tonight. One thing I was just thinking of is that we have a long list here of suggestions so far. And and the criteria that I put together was based on what parks uses for renaming or naming their latest park, for example. And the one thing that they did is they had a committee that could actually shrink the number of ideas for names and then bring that to council. So I don't know if that would be a next step. Mitch and I are both on the on the villages HOA and so we could talk with other members of people who live there. We don't need to grow the list unless you all have a different idea, but I think it might be good if we shorten the list a little bit so it's easier to make a decision, because right now there's quite a few.
Well, as I recall, the parks had some eighty-five suggestions and whittled it down. There's, I guess, I'm wondering aloud about the purpose and timing, if it's a good change of pace, get people's mind off of what's going on so they can participate since they're home and on social media, that I would say, why wouldn't you just open it up and gather and then go through your screening process? Otherwise, it seems, you know, quite a limited, limited list from limited votes.
Yes, definitely people who use the area that we receive ideas from and Courtney was keeping track of all those of the list and where and how it got to her. But you're right in that it's all people who know where the villages are, they use it or they live there, they live next to it, so.
So I, to me, it's still a low priority, but if somebody wants to, you know, move it ahead.
Well, we've been trying to move it ahead for long over a year, so.
Well, I think we got a dose of last meeting, you know, if we wanted to move ahead and stuff, that there were more than just a name that should be moving ahead on the villages.
Well, no, because this takes time, too. So we need to, I think we need to get a name so we can, when we move forward with the with the new plan, then it will have a name and there's a lot of other documents that have the name on it already. And we just created a new zone, two new zones, and they, so they, I mean, it just keeps growing, so I think we need to rename it so in the future, when things get back to normal, whatever that's gonna mean. And Ron and Allison are gonna be trying to sell that area up there, we need to be ready to go. We need some enthusiasm about it. And right now, we're all kind of not in that frame of mind, but I would say that originally we were asking for some help for a process and that didn't come. And so the people on the HOA and neighbors around it, the same group that provided names, came forward with their ideas, so that's where we're at.
Council Mark, you've got your hand up?
Oh, and this is a small, I don't have a real strong feeling on this. I know it's important to, it was first word people, so do what you want, but good luck changing the name of the Knoll. I don't think that's ever gonna happen. You might as well change the name of the Pacific Ocean or something, because I just don't think you're gonna have any luck there. So I'd focus on the other one, that's neither here nor there.
Okay. Council Hoogland?
Hi, thank you. I support also the Knoll, I think it's kind of a moot vote, but I also agree with you, Mayor, about the, you know, put it out there, you know, just take, yes, thank you for the HOA and the people who came up with their their names, take those names and and put those out there in a poll for the city, absolutely. I mean, yeah, to change a pace, I fully support that and think that that's absolutely what should be done. And so what if there's nine names? That's fine also, you know, and there's gonna be probably a fill in your own name and if there's something there, too. So I mean, I think it's a wonderful thing to do for the community and thank you for the REIA group and everybody there, too, you know, so, I mean, great.
The HOA, but okay.
Oh, okay, well, the HOA, yeah.
I did have one other thought, which is I'm seeing the name Sitka on several of these choices, and I just wonder if the Sitka art people will feel like we're, you know, stealing some of their wind.
I wouldn't think so, those are Sitka trees up there. You go for a few walks, you'll see them.
Yeah, they're Sitka spruce, I know, but I just, I don't know.
You don't own the name, the tree does.
So I think I'm looking for someone to chair this process, and it's not me. And Ron has got limited staff to dedicate to this, so I think it's in conjunction with Otherwise, we can table it and come up in a year.
No.
Oh, was that a volunteer then?
Well, I think I need a co-chair and Mitch to help me out with this.
I'm willing to co-chair.
So there you go.
All right. But, and that'd be great if you both would, but I think Riley and I both would like to see community participation, a broader base, and then have at it.
Okay.
Is that?
So then we just need someone in, maybe in Ron's part of the world, maybe Courtney, could she help us with getting word out and?
She is exactly who I was thinking of.
Okay.
All right.
All right, well.
All right.
We'll go get him.
All right, you got it. Okay.
Thank you.
You bet. Let's see, that's agenda, we're down to the city manager report, not that you haven't been all through this one.
Nothing new for me, except next week you do have your first budget meeting and on Wednesday we are doing a trial run on Zoom with the Budget Committee. And on Wednesday, we are doing a trial run on Zoom with the Budget Committee.
Can you remind us, the Budget Committee, is that Monday, next Monday?
Monday, 5 o'clock for Urban Renewables, 6 o'clock for City.
Okay. All right. Great. Mr. Appicello, anything you keep getting mail from legal sources places?
Yeah, I sent that along today for your amusement. And we got another letter. Well, you'll read it when you look at your email. The only thing I wanted to remind you is you have the next item on the agenda, actions if any based on the executive session. And I believe someone had a motion prepared, so.
Me too, all right. And I think, Council Casper, this is the agenda item, actions if any based on work session or executive session in this case.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to direct staff to proceed and provide legal evidence for site control, such as purchase of sale agreement, as discussed in the executive session on April 13.
For the developer?
For the developer, yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody that's opposed? All right, unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Judy. All right, how about any comments from citizens that are hanging around? How about counselors?
I have a citizen's comment I got while the meeting was in session. So I don't know, I emailed it to Ron. Ron, did you get it? No. Do you want me to read it, or does he get it?
Ron muted.
Ron's looking.
I got it, so I'll go ahead and read it. This is from Marcy Baker, Lincoln City resident, Ocean Lake, owner of Zest, Crayberry, and the Tea House, and Marcy's Bar and Bistro. She says, "To city staff and city council, I understand this current situation we are all facing together is unlike anything any of us have seen. This being the case, we have no clear path on how to best address this crisis. For my own decision-making process, when there are no clear answers, I fall back on basics. In this time of the unknown and the new normal, I suggest we start here. I personally believe, when the answers and guidance we are seeking from higher governments and organizations are sparse or confusing, and none of us really know what to expect in the coming months, Lincoln City should choose to make a localized plan using the resources we have at our disposal to meet our community's unique needs and as many basic needs of its citizens at this time. I believe that governments of all sizes, local to national, should focus on assisting people in obtaining basic essentials like food and shelter and create an atmosphere of safety and community. We need to ask, what actionable information do we have? What are Lincoln City's unique needs? What factors can we control? What resources are available to help? I honestly don't know what resources are available to the city, but I will share a couple of ideas. As a business owner in a restaurant industry, I do have a suggestion to help local food establishments while also helping those in our community struggling to put food on their tables and for some, decreasing the public health risk of grocery shopping. If there is money available to do so, perhaps from urban development, create a grant fund for money that would be solely used by locally owned businesses with OHA licensed establishments to purchase food, stock the fridges, and require applicants to provide some kind of free meal service to the community. Then the city could publish a list of all citywide resources for local residents to ensure continued access to this basic need, while also allowing the hearts of locally owned food establishment to continue pumping. From a business standpoint, depending on the size of the food establishment and them having accurate margins, having assistance in food purchasing should have higher returns than assistance in paying rent, if done efficiently. As far as sanitation during this pandemic is concerned, I firmly believe it would be safer to have our licensed kitchens feed our community rather than have the community risk exposure and crowding at the grocery stores. Lincoln City could set an example of creative leadership through this crisis and find a win-win like this. Lastly, call upon the community for creative ideas and solutions. This is an opportunity, this is an opportune time for the city to create new channels for public access and open transparent communication. The world has almost immediately gone 80% online, and we have to stay caught up as much as possible. Maybe host a special video conference and invite local techies to share ideas. Many people are bored at home right now. I believe many of us have skills we could offer to help our community as a whole at this time. I believe for those seeking assistance right now, it is perfectly reasonable to ask something back, be it feeding the community, volunteer hours, or other unique ways locals can use their unique value to lean into our community right now. We can sit and wait for guidance, or we can choose to be creative with the resources we do have, come together as a community, and grow and become better through this currently indefinite crisis. I know many folks I have talked with would love to see a special forum or town hall event to discuss local needs, concerns, and ideas. I understand there will come a time when we need to make a plan for economic redevelopment, but I implore you to please focus on our current situation and actions that can be taken now to ease the amount of recovery we will face. There are many businesses that could make it through this with a little bit of help. We don't need, we don't all need to run out of money and close up or go so deep into debt, we are only slowing our demise. I very much hope you all will see the need to respond quickly with first aid in order to stop the bleeding and stabilize what can be saved. The time for reconstructive surgery will come later. Take care and thank you so much for your time and hard work, Marcy Baker.
Thank you, thank you for reading that. Thanks, Marcy, for sending it in. Did you have something you want, comments, Riley?
Yes. Have we looked at energy shut-off somehow? Or, you know, I don't know how high our energy bills are. But have we looked at minimizing the, you know, reducing costs through this?
Well, I know the utility companies have a similar fund that they, the folks can apply for.
I mean, we as the city, the city of Lincoln City, in our business, electronic needs. Have we tried reducing costs by minimizing?
Oh, that'd be a Ron question.
Yeah, just like, are we actively looking at cost-saving measures now with electricity or our own stuff? So that we're not, we're not still at 100% of our, you know, consumption. We've reduced down, you know, to manage what we're spending.
Yes, both in the immediate and in the long run.
Okay, great, thank you.
So I'm assuming, as earlier reported, with the water and sewer, just by not producing as much or the demands, that's done significant on the energy level.
That is correct.
Other, anything else, Riley? Deanna?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I think, I think Marcy's idea is really good. I applaud her thinking out loud like that. And the idea of having businesses that are already in the business of making food and preparing it and having it ready for people to eat is a good idea. Is that something that kind of fits into Ed's thinking about all the gift certificate? Could we speed that up? Could we do that now? To support our own, you know, to support the businesses now?
Yeah, what I'm proposing puts money in the businesses' pockets. And if they use that to fund an effort like this, sure. I mean, again, I can see those two concepts dovetailing where we're putting money into the businesses right now. And, you know, we're also gaining a tool to help us out in the future. So in answer to your question, yeah, yeah, I could see both those ideas working together in a very, a very good way.
Mitch?
Yes, I just want to explain, I voted no on two things earlier in the meeting and didn't really explain why. When it comes to the Styrofoam, I am for banning Styrofoam, I'm just not in on the timing. And when it came to the composting, it's just a matter of cost and the situation we're in currently. Besides that, our Parks and Rec Department is doing a lot of stuff online and on their Facebook page. This week, tomorrow, and Wednesday, they're doing Zoom dance parties at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. If you go on their Facebook, it gives you the code to get into the Zoom. They're going to play music, and then we can all watch each other look silly.
All right. Council Mark?
Yeah, I'm kind of all over the place. One thought, you know, we are, the city was asked to give vouchers for homeless people to stay in hotels. I'm wondering how that's going, and it relates to this concern about the homeless camps. And are people finding help with, you know, people who need a place to stay? And I know Family Promise, I believe, was, I think some hotels were helping out with family, some Family Promise people. I heard about that. That was one question I had. Let me, and before, let me just go through my other thoughts. I'm on the board at Neighbors for Kids. Neighbors for Kids is receiving money from the USDA and I think the Oregon Department of Education to prepare food boxes for families with children, I want to say. And Lincoln City families are eligible. If they contact Neighbors for Kids, they can get on the list to get food boxes. And one of the most popular things about the boxes is activities that are being included, you know, for children. And the families seem to be responding really positively to that, and they're enjoying it. And I will say, my partner Britt has put in hours, A, coming up with ideas, along with other staff members there, and also working on those activities. And that's been a big hit, so families can turn to that. As far as their, I mentioned the USDA grant, and I think ODE, Department of Education, grants. And I'm wondering if there's some way that other groups in the city, maybe through the food pantry or something, could get some money that would support efforts by people like Marcy Baker or whoever has a kitchen to maybe put together meals. And along that line, I want to say, whenever Marcy Baker speaks up, I find myself listening really closely because she makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate that. And the last thing I want to comment on is, is I get out, I walk the beach, I see other people out on the beach. They're keeping social distances. I think people in town are responding real positively and doing what they need to do. And it's really disturbing to hear reports of people responding with anger to cars without a state license plates. Or that just has no, no place in this community for people to be angry. People come here from out of town, and they're keeping their distance. I think they have every right to do that. And let's try to keep our emotions in check. So that's what I got.
Thank you. Diane? Nothing, okay. Judy?
Yeah, I noticed that there are a lot of dogs walking their owners these days, more than I've seen before. I want to thank Parks and Recs for keeping the doggie do bags well supplied, because it seems to be working. And that's nice, because I do the doggie patrol, so that's important. I know we have a lot of mask makers out there, and some of them are volunteered, some are for purchase. Some are available at Itzy. I myself was given a couple, which I find very helpful. And when I go to the store and out and about, I do wear the masks to sort of stress the importance of it. There's still a lot of visitors in our area down here by the beach that come and go, especially on the weekends. And I appreciate the police just driving through and having a presence. And I have a new tactic that I've learned. I wear my mask and stand on the sidewalk when somebody illegally parks in front of the barrier and stare them down. I stare, and I stare, and then I stare at their license plate. And then they stare back at me and they go, "Oh, George, let's go to the Olivia Beach access." Worked like a charm.
Thank you for patrolling, Judy.
You're welcome.
That's great. You know, I echo Council Mark's remarks and attitude. My observation is, I'm real pleased with the city residents that are honoring the physical distancing and at the same time, getting desperate for socialization. But, you know, we do have to hold the line. And I don't know how to applaud the folks that are working, you know, these clerks at the gas stations or the grocery stores, or even the drive-throughs. You know, it's so nice to see and appreciative. And firemen and policemen and city staff usually get a lot of credit for being out there. But these clerks are certainly serving, you know, we who are staying at home as much as we can and getting out once in a while, so. I love all the hands, you guys, thanks.
Why are you just doing that?
Now, these guys have more things to do. I don't have anything else. We can adjourn for the evening. Deanna, do you have something?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say that one of the things, and I think this depends on where you live in the city, but one of the things that's been a hurdle for me for this duration and into the future are the people that are VRD owners and second homeowners and all of the back and the forth that they've been doing to their other homes. And they seem to have settled down a little bit now, but it was, it's been really bad. It's been a couple of days here, and then they're gone for a couple, three days, and they're back again. And it's a bit unnerving. They need to pick a place and stay there. So I've been trying to educate them, but that's always a hard, that's hard to do there. My neighbors, I like them, they're good people. I call them neighbors even though I don't see them very often. But I have 11 of them that have been coming and going and coming and going back to the valley. And it's just, it's just not a good look.
Judy?
Just a follow-up question. That subcommittee, Riley, Rick, myself, Ed, who's going to contact us to get on the Zoom screen or whatever? Who's going to be in charge of contacting us?
I'll start contacting you tomorrow.
Who spoke? Oh, Ron, okay. Okay, good.
All right, well, let's call it a evening, thank you all. I think it's, Zoom is working better and better. You guys are getting to be real experts. All right, go home, go, go home.
Good night, all.
How do you make those thumbs?
Yeah, how do you make those? How do you do that?
Reactions, at the bottom it says reactions.
Reactions, oh.